I'd like to ask for a motion to come out of executive session. Do we have seconds?
Second.
Thanks, Captain. Could you please take the roll?
Jill Carr.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
William Clifford.
Yes.
Norman Gere.
Yes.
Jenny Stewart.
Yes. Okay. So, alright. I'd like to bring this meeting, the school board, for October 15th. I'd like to bring it to order. Shula, please take the roll.
William Clifford.
Here.
Paul Walker.
Here.
Norman Gere.
Here.
Jill Carr.
Here.
Jenny Stewart.
Here.
Okay. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the God of our own stand, on our nation, under God, in the symbol of the receiving justice law.
I'd like to thank all of you for being here this evening. I'd like to make special welcome to see him at the end of the row there. Mayor Dick Edwards is here. Thank you for being here. Mike Ospak, the president of city council. Do I see you, Mike? Okay. There you are. Hi. And then I'd like to welcome, is anyone else that I haven't seen here from city council? Okay. I'd also like to welcome our media, Marie Thomas, Jen Larson, and Clint Cook. Thank you for being here. And we also have some members of the League of Women Voters. Thank you for being here as well. Okay. Opportunity for public to address the board on agenda items? Okay. Our showcase presentation is Bowling Green High School, and I'll have Mr. Doc Dever introduce our students.
I just was short. We have Amanda McBride, Gillian Powell to present kind of young program in our building. It's called PBIS and they'll explain all that stuff, and they're wonderful members, and they're doing a great job, and they do what they want.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming here tonight. I'm Amanda McBride. I'm one of the school counselors at the high school, and we were asked to present on our PBIS program that we are initiating at the high school level. This is a district-wide program that's been in our school for quite a few years now. So last year was the first year that the high school actually put it into action. So we had a lot of feedback from students from the first year that we wanted to share with you. Below is all of our team members for our high school team. They are a lot of teachers and faculty members, and they consist of teachers from all different subject areas. So they've been an extremely large part of our PBIS department, and they're the one that organizes everything. So we meet monthly and decide what we're going to do for that month and for the rest of the year. So they're an awesome group, and we're really excited to have them.
Hi, I'm Gillian Powell, and I'm a school bylaw assistant and a district head for grade six through twelve. So to talk about PBIS, positive behavior intervention support. It is a system that can help our school create a culture of positive and consistent expectation. By using the positive behavior intervention support, we can model and reinforce positive behaviors for our students, while teaching is a preference, the expectations for our students are the same. And as Amanda mentioned, this is a program for preschool through twelve grade, where we have the same expectations in place, for students to be respectful, to be responsible, and to be safe. Under the leadership of Melanie Garvey, we have worked through our entire district, and we plan together, and as we evolve, we are able to implement what is appropriate for each grade level.
We did start our high school team in the year, at the school year 2017 to 2018. We started by attending training, we assembled our student cardigan and our uniforms. And in the spring of 2018, we ran a survey of our entire faculty team in order to develop a program that would be appropriate for the school. And under Joe leadership of Jack Dever and Dan Glass, we are establishing a positive environment and respecting public targets and reduce specific behaviors within the system. So through the use of the survey with our teachers, in coordination with the district expectations that were already in place at our elementary and into our middle school, our survey results indicated those things type of people in the framework. And so we then broke it down into the specific areas, classroom hallways, cafeteria, and back room, so that we could not only just put the expectations out there, but then have specific points to direct and educate our students, to teach them those skills in order to cultivate that culture. So in our high school, we recognize students daily by verbally acknowledging and reinforcing the qualities of being Bobcat Proud in all of the environments that we set up. Monthly, each faculty member at the high school identifies a student as Bobcat Proud, demonstrating their school's fundamental safety behaviors. Our faculty members then write a postcard home, recognizing what it was about that student that made them Bobcat Proud, and identified those qualities. And then monthly, all of our nominated students are called down to our gym, where we take a group photo, and then we also have opportunities for the students to...
So at the bottom are some examples of some prizes that we've given out throughout last year and into this year. A lot of the popular items include Bobcat apparel. They really are interested in a bunch of food and snacks, so they're looking. We also do tickets for homecoming, tickets for prom, so things that we think that they're really going to be interested in. Last year, this program was funded by a grant. That grant is no longer in place, so a lot of time we're looking for donations from the community to work with us in that way. This year, we'd like to thank our high school PTO who donated a lot of money for some prizes for our students, so that we can continue out this program. So that has been really awesome. So at the end of the year, last year, we really wanted to hear from our student population to see how, what they thought of the program, how they thought it went, if they had any suggestions for the following year. So we did a survey, and these are some of the statistics that came from that survey. Thank God we had a math teacher who is part of our team, so she did a lot of the counseling for us. So forty percent of our student population were nominated and received postcards. We thought that that was a pretty cool percentage for the first year, and gives us plenty of room to grow in that aspect. After receiving a postcard, eighty-nine point two percent of students said that the relationship they had with their teacher wasn't eight or higher. So we were really excited to see that number. After receiving a postcard, eighty-three point eight percent of students felt more motivated or encouraged to continue being Bobcat Proud. So that was really exciting for us to see as well, to kind of show that the program is working. After receiving a postcard, the percentage of students who were unwilling to participate in class decreased by nine point one percent. So it kind of gave some students the opportunity to be showcased and know that their teacher is really looking at them, they are seeing the good things that they're doing, and continue to motivate them to see the things that they're doing right. And then the quote, "I feel comfortable talking to my teacher about things happening in my life outside of school," increased from forty-one point nine percent before receiving a postcard to fifty-four point one percent after receiving a postcard. So the twelve point two percent increase. So after receiving that postcard, they felt like they could open up and talk to their teachers more, which is a lot of what we are encouraging our students to do, so we are really excited about that as well. So all of these words kind of meshed together to showcase what the students had said positively about the program. Some of the quotes that we received from students are as follows. One student said, "It really meant a lot to me to be nominated. After moving here, I felt as though I was just another student, but being nominated made me feel worthwhile." Another student shared, "I feel important because I never thought any teacher really noticed me." And then another one we wanted to share was, "I feel like I actually accomplished something, something more than just having great grades in class." So we were really excited to get that feedback from students. This is obviously still a very new program. We're looking forward to continue to grow, so we want to keep getting that feedback from our students. A lot of people at first said, "High school students should already know how to behave," which is accurate, and they do. But this is just promoting that we all want to be recognized, and we all want to be recognized for the good things that we're doing. So that is what we're doing through this PBIS program at high school level, and we're really excited to continue seeing it happen.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do you not have a board president report tonight? So we will go straight to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. Schools have been pretty busy here in the last month. Hold on. Our homecoming game and dance was this past weekend, and I want to congratulate our football team for a victory over Southview. Our cross-country teams on Saturday competed in the NLL, and the boys finished second and the girls finished fifth. And also last week, Macy Hannis qualified for the state golf championship this week, and she was medalist of our region, so she was number one. So she is basically going down to Columbus as one of the top four golfers in the state. And she will leave Thursday for a practice round, and then Friday and Saturday she'll play at the Ohio State Gray Course and hopefully bring home a championship. Lucy Vassell qualified for a district tennis tournament. Our soccer girls' open tournament played tomorrow at 5:00 PM here at home, so if you're not doing anything, come on out and root our girls on. Our boys are playing their first tournament game tonight as we speak in Ashland, and we hope that they come home with a victory. And then our volleyball tournament starts tomorrow as well, here at home, at 5:30, and our girls will be competing against Lima Senior. Some more good news, tomorrow we will deploy our virtual reality headsets to our classrooms that were purchased from a donation that we received from Lupizol in excess of eighteen thousand dollars. This is going to allow our students to basically travel through the world while never leaving the classroom and learning about a lot of things. And I want to thank Greg Esposito for helping us coordinate that and making that happen. Thank you, Greg. Thanks for being here. Also, we've taken advantage of the safety grant that was offered by the Attorney General's Office, and that totaled over sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And what we did with that was twofold. We purchased a Raptor Technology screening system and stopped the bleed stations. The Raptor Technology is a system that will be in every high school or school office, and when someone comes in to the building, we'll scan a photo ID, and if the person's on, they'll give us information on custody. It'll also tell us if that person's on a sexual predator list or a variety of other safety concerns that would be adverse to our children. It'll then print a badge with a photo to let students and staff know that this person has been screened, and it's safe to have that person in the building. The bleed stations will be in each of the buildings, and they're attached to the wall, and hopefully we never have to use them. They'll be done, they're being done in conjunction with the Red Cross, and teachers that are interested in volunteering to be trained, along with all of our administrators, will be trained, and we, like I said, we hope never to use it, but that could be the difference between saving a life before first responders get to a building in the case of one of those tragic events. Several weeks ago, we lost a student, and it shook our school community, and we want to thank the CRC Children's Resource Center for their efforts in providing mental health counselors at both the middle and the high school during the days that followed. Their continued support is much appreciated. We'd also like to thank our school partner, Atsigo School District, for sending their therapy dog to our buildings to help our students in that grieving process. We all know that mental health today is a major concern, not only in Bowling Green, but throughout the state and the nation. At the candidate's forum, it was asked whether, as candidate, you would support the hiring of a mental health specialist for our district. It was suggested by one candidate that, as a district, we need to do more and should enlist the resources available throughout the county. I take offense to that. And to give people a glimpse and inform everyone just how seriously we take that and take mental health and many of the agencies we enlist in supporting our students, I'd like to share some of the partnerships here tonight. When we're talking about our early intervention, three-year-olds through first grade, we work with Help Me Grove, Wood County, to identify and serve at-risk preschool students, starting at the age of three. Special needs preschool, serving identified and typical preschool students in a five-star licensed preschool program. All kindergarten and first grade students partner with the Children's Resource Center, who provides an early childhood mental health consultant and early child prevention specialist to address the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students K through one. This is an early intervention program and is funded through the Whole Child Matters Grant, Wood County Adamus Board, and the United Way. We are a member of the Early Childhood Task Force and participate in city and county-wide programs such as the Project Connect and other child find activities. For school age, we partner with the Children's Resource Center, who provide onsite mental health therapists in all of our buildings, K through twelve. The purpose is to provide onsite mental health services beyond the scope of our guidance counselors. We have Cindy Camp, who services our kindergarten through fifth grade, and Beth Lieber, who supports our seven through twelve. We work with the Wood County Education Service Center in a variety of ways. We contract with them for an ADOT, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drugs On-Site Prevention Specialist, provided in partnership with the Wood County Adamus Board and Safe School Grants, three days a week. Felicia Boyd is that person. We contract with them to have access to a behavior specialist consultant. Her name is Teresa Kitchen, and she services our district as well as other districts in Wood County once a week. She provides onsite, consultive, and professional training to teachers, and that is free, and to staff to meet the needs of at-risk students. All teachers K to eight have been trained to teach second step program. This is a social-emotional learning curriculum, which will teach students emotional regulation, et cetera. The district has implemented a PBIS program, which you saw part of that, as it is now bubbled up to the high school. We are now a K-12 PBIS district. All counselors are crisis intervention-trained and trained to assess students at risk for suicide, depression, and other mental health issues. All seventh grade and freshmen are required to participate in intensive suicide awareness program yearly. Prior to the event that we had, all of our freshmen did go through that, and unfortunately, that student was not considered a risk based on the answers that that student had given. All new and existing teachers are required to participate in training to identify and report signs of suicide and other mental health issues. All staff have been trained in Alice. Community partners. We participate on the Wood County Family First Council, participating in Cluster, all-agency task force designed to help with individual at-risk families. We're participating with the Wood County Children's Services Multidisciplinary Team, participate on an Early Childhood Task Force. We partner with Wood County Juvenile Court to prevent at-risk students from entering the system through the Jump and Diversion Program. We partner again with the Children's Resource Center for Crisis Intervention Services, Respite Services, and Counseling. We partner with Wood County Jobs and Family Services to identify and serve at-risk families. Child Abuse Reporting, Child Abuse Prevention and Training, Sexual Abuse Prevention Program. All third and preschool teachers are trained, and all third grade and preschool students are provided this early intervention program. We consult with the Wood County Health Department regarding health and safety issues. We consult and partner with the BG Police and the Wood County Sheriff. On-site resource officer, Dare Officer, Robin Short. We work with Human Trafficking Coalition to raise awareness and prevention of human trafficking along the I-75 corridor. We also, we're almost getting to the end here, the American Red Cross Stop the Bleed Program. We partner with BGSU with many partnerships, not just student-teacher partnerships, and then of course, our local churches, Saint Marks with Project Connect for the homeless. First United Methodist provides needs for elementary buildings with clothing and food, and other churches partner with individual buildings through a mentoring program. As you can see, and this is just a partial list, as you can see, we have many partnerships throughout the county and continue to look for avenues to address this important issue. Also with the candidate forum, one candidate stated that the bond issue has divided the community, and was laying that at the feet of this board. I disagree with that statement. I've never known an issue to have a hundred percent support, whether we're talking about an MRDD, a police levy, a fire levy, or even a park levy. All of those have had people vote no, and as we know, pretty much every issue starts out forty percent in opposition, forty percent in support, and twenty percent need to be informed to make a decision. That is the democratic process at work, and yet despite falling, people falling on one side of the issue or the other, very few issues that I have ever witnessed have had this amount of animosity towards the issue and individuals for and against. It is perfectly okay for people to disagree, because everyone is entitled to their own opinion based on their own circumstances. This board didn't divide this community. This current board did their job and even enlisted our community in this attempt through the task forces, and ultimately made a decision based on what is best for our community, our district, but most importantly, our students. What has divided this community is the name-calling, the personal attacks, the character assassinations, the egging of people's homes, the anonymous phone calls, the anonymous letters, the intimidation tactics, and the harassment of board members, administration, teachers, and community members. It is also extended to the members of our campaign committee, as well as supporters throughout our community. Most recently, last night, on social media, a candidate running for this school board stated on social media that a campaign member was receiving oral sex from another man. Let me reiterate, the person posting this statement is a person running for our school board. If this were a school setting, the behaviors that I've just listed would warrant a parent to call our schools and ask for discipline for the various bullying tactics being used. Also, late last night, sometime between 10:30 PM and 6:00 AM, an anti-campaign sign appeared directly across from my home. Not at any particular angle until about, oh, I'm going to say about 5:45, I was informed, but not directed towards oncoming traffic, but directed specifically at my home. This sign is plastered with vote no signs, including the following candidates running for the board. Brian Smith, Grant Chamberlain, and Peggy Thompson. While some believe that this is a campaign attempt to gain my support, I can't help but think that it was placed purposely to let my wife, and I know that they know where we live, therefore, I'm going to consider harassment and intimidation. Regardless, for making this statement, I will continue to be a target on social media, which, by my estimation, will probably start in about an hour. So while one of the candidates that I just named believes that this board has divided this community, I'd say to that person, own your own efforts that you and your opposition have put forth, and take credit for dividing this community, and don't blame this board for doing their jobs and maintaining their professionalism throughout our recent and this most current campaign. Thank you. That concludes my support. Now, you can look there.
Okay. Item eight, correction and or approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 17th, 2019. Do you want to come up? Second? Any discussion? Okay. Mrs. Shula, will you take the roll, please?
Thank you. Paul Walker.
Yes.
William Clifford.
Yes.
Jill Carr.
Yes.
Norman Gere.
Yes.
Jenny Stewart.
Yes. Okay. Item nine, listing of expenditures and investments made through September 1st to September 30th, 2019, then and now payments, and the treasurer's monthly report. Have a motion?
I'm ready.
Second? Okay. Mrs. Shula, once again.
Thank you. Paul Walker.
Yes.
Jill Carr.
Yes.
Norman Gere.
Yes.
William Clifford.
Yes.
Jenny Stewart.
Yes.
Okay. Item ten, personnel.
Under certificate personnel, we have six individuals for an educational advancement for the 2019-20 school year. Item two, we have a leave request for the 1920 school year, which is being adjusted from January 8th to January 13th. Excuse me. We have supplemental contracts for the 1920 school year, the employment of athletics in fifth grade camp, and that's in Exhibit Number Two. Support personnel, excuse me, we have Robin Lopez, supervisor, rate effective August 30th, 2019, through September 13th of 2019, ten days, pursuing head custodian duties at Crim. Candy Holbert, supervisor, rate pursuing head custodian duties effective August 26th at Crim Elementary, and then 28th, 29th, and September 10th at Kenwood Elementary, and September 12th and 13th at Conyod Elementary, for six days total. Keith Spangler, supervisor, rate effective August 21st through October 4th, thirty-two days, pursuing head custodian duties at the middle school. Item four is extension of previously approved leave for absence requests, and those dates are listed. Item five is the transportation substitute to 1920 school year, regular rate of fourteen sixty-two, and field trip fourteen thirty, and that individual would be hired for substitute. The resignation of a food service head cashier, and then the employment of a van driver for transportation, effective October 15th. Under other personnel, volunteer recognitions for the 1920 school year, these are unpaid positions, and these are in your revised Exhibit Number Three. Item two, student activity contracts for the 1920 school year, occasional employees in paid and contractual positions, and that's Exhibit Four. And that's all we...
Okay. I'd like a motion, do you think, please?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Shula.
Norman Gere.
Yes.
William Clifford.
Yes.
Jill Carr.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Jenny Stewart.
Yes.
Okay. Item eleven, operations.
Have a... Have a day off. This is bold and fine.
Just a quick, Candy.
Okay. So as we look at the interest rate update, are we looking at...
No. Of course not. Yes, all right.
Okay. So the interest rate update, if y'all recall, when David Conley came up in August, he gave an update to us regarding the interest rate. When we looked at the ballot issue that we have for the elementary, when we did all that work with the task forces, at that time, it was almost a year ago, and we were looking at a four point two five percent interest rate. So in August... just a quick, 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 just a quick,
Yeah, we have approval to follow.
Top that.
Yeah, I can't top that one. The approval of following agreements. We have an acceptance of a service agreement between Springfield Local Schools and Bowling Green City Schools for occupational therapy services and a leave program for special needs student effective August nineteen, two thousand nineteen through May twenty ninth of two thousand twenty. That's exhibit six. Item B, contracts for students with disabilities for the nineteen, twenty school year with three mile schools for one, special needs student exhibit seven. Item C, transportation contract for special needs student for services between Bridget McGowan and Maya Smith in the Bowling Green City Schools for the nineteen, twenty school year effective October the eighth, two thousand nineteen, and that's revised exhibit number eight. We want to follow, accept and thank for the following gifts. Charles and Bev Meyer, twenty-five dollars to the athletic department. Act BG, The Amazing Race donated a check of fifty-six hundred and fifty dollars for the one author Bowling Green Middle School puts on. We have twenty-one Kroger mixed box school supply gifts guided at four hundred and twenty dollars by Jason Miller. We have snacks and food valued at three hundred and fifty dollars to Crim Elementary Second Grade Classes from the Modern Woodman, DJ Dieter. Snacks valued at fifty dollars for Kenwood Elementary Students, Rich Rollins and Eileen Underwood. And school supplies valued at three hundred dollars for the Bowling Green City Schools from Walmart nineteen thirteen for a total this month of sixty-seven hundred and ninety-five dollars of gifts, and we want to thank our community for that. We have under item three, or number three, first reading of new policies, the use of tobacco by administrators. Item four, we have the review and adoption of the following revised and replacement policies. These are policies that are all there, and they're either being updated with legal language or revised for some reason. So, and then finally, number five is the recommendation of the revised strategic plan that would go into that this school year moving forward.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Any discussions?
Yes, under the policy fifty-three fifty, one of the changes under student suicide, and please let me explain this, that this is not in reaction to our recent events. This is a law change that says that employees have to be trained. It used to be every five years, that has been changed to every two years, and every new employee has to be trained coming in. That's the change, okay, in case anyone was curious about that.
Mrs. Shiller, please take the role.
Jill Carr.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Norman Gere.
Yes.
William Clifford.
Yes.
Jenny Stewart.
Yes.
Okay, now it's the opportunity.
May I just jump in on the strategic plan? I was fortunate, I think I was fortunate, to be part of that, of the updating of the plan for the school year, and I just came away very, very pleased. The outcome's one thing, but just how the staff worked together on the various goals and objectives, and it's like the dialogue, and difference of opinions, similar opinions, but I think it just meshed very well with what we believe, and so I was as really pleased with the process, so just want to raise that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, we are at the portion, opportunity for public and our board to present additional comments. Our first person will be Bob McComber. One last thing, please state your name and your unit.
Bob McComber, four twenty North Wood Drive here in Bowling Green. If you have a long memory or have been around a long time, you might remember that I was on this Board of Education from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and one. I'd like to make a few comments in regards to the levy tonight. My first comments are directed at a specific group of voters, those voters who are willing to vote for a school levy that increases their taxes, but prefer the three-school option over the one-school option. You folks may hold the outcome of this election in your hands when you take into account, as Mr. Sprucey said, that a substantial number of people vote no on every BG school levy, especially a new levy, and especially that involves the property tax. I am not going to try and convince you that your preference is wrong. Eighteen years in public service, public office taught me that when a controversial issue has many proponents on both sides of the issue, there's probably some merit to both arguments. Whether we were to build one school or three, though, I believe we would be enormously successful. It may be that between the one-school option and the three-school option, one would work out a little better than the other. I don't think anyone really knows for sure which that might be, but we can be pretty sure that doing nothing will be an abject failure, and a no vote on this levy means that we will be doing nothing for at least another year. So for those of you who prefer the three-school option, I would ask that you consider voting yes on this levy. I believe our staff already provides a good education to elementary students despite the many shortcomings in the physical facilities. There is no way that they are not going to make this work. The difference between one school and three is not the difference between success and failure. Only the do-nothing option or make minor renovation option represents failure. The second subject I would like to briefly address is the hostility that this election has generated, a disproportionate amount of which has been directed at the five members of the Board of Education. It pains me to watch this. I know all of these people pretty well, except Paul Walker, and everything I have read and heard about Mr. Walker leads me to believe that what I am about to say is true of him as well. These are good people, intelligent people, people who are simply trying to do the best they can to solve an enormously difficult problem. It is okay to disagree with their judgment if it is done in a respectful, civil manner, but personal attacks and name-calling is uncalled for. Let's all take a deep breath, two or three if need be, and see if we can do better the last three weeks before the election. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight.
Mike Ospaker.
Good evening, Mike Ospaker, twenty-five Park Drive, Bowling Green, Ohio. I wanted to take this opportunity to once again publicly express my support for the bond levy, and also for the efforts of this Board of Education. As Bob has mentioned, you can dispute the approach to whether we want one building or three buildings, but you cannot dispute the integrity and the legitimacy directive this project forces is for, and also it's difficult to dispute the deteriorating condition of our school buildings. Excuse me, I was pleased the week ago when my colleagues in the city council joined me in unanimously passing a resolution declaring broad support for our city schools in considering the value of the schools in our community, and also expressing, again unanimously, the support for this infant tax bond levy. I would like to share just a couple different passages of what this resolution I think is particularly appropriate. Bowling Green City Council recognizes that one of the key components of a sustainable economic development strategy is to attract more people to live in Bowling Green and to the immediate surrounding area, and further recognizes that businesses move to or choose to grow in places where the employees prefer to live. And also, another section states that investing in public education is particularly crucial to ensuring the future health of our economy and the competitiveness of our community. Students must leave our schools ready for success in our twenty-first century society and ready to fill current and future jobs. Public investment in education is necessary to equip schools with resources, personnel, facilities, and technology to position students to acquire the skills and knowledge needed for acknowledging career success. I hope that all of you will join with me and support this bond levy as I begin to vote on the upcoming plan.
Ryan Myers.
Ryan Myers, one-five-three-eight Springfield Drive here in Bowling Green. I've heard a lot about, okay, after the election, we need to bring the community back, and going back to what was just said, why not now? I fully support one community, one school. That's not why I came up here tonight. The divide in the community is why I came up here. The mere fact that I say I support one community, one school, I'm automatically stereotyped as being lackey, as having an alternate dialogical objective, as being just in step with all the other conspiracy theorists, simply for having an opinion, simply for having a perspective. And I don't know if it's the political climate in this country or not, to where that seems like it's okay to go ahead and, if someone you disagree with, completely bash their character, completely bash their motives, but I would, it's not okay. It's not okay out in the United States, but in this community, for the fact that we're disagreeing about school buildings, we're disagreeing about the best way to address youth's needs, and the visceral attacks that keep coming, simply for people having an opinion and wanting to do what's right, it forces them. And again, just to echo on some of the other things that were said, one thing that I want to make sure that everyone keeps in mind is every single person in here is a leader. And again, this is fifteen years of being leadership, the one thing I know is that the biggest thing you can do as a leader is model a way. Because right now, students, elementary to twelfth grade, and our young voters, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and so forth, are watching, they're listening to the conversations that are being had, they're reading the online back and forth, and they're seeing what's on the news. And so, what are we teaching them? We're teaching them that by what we're modeling, it is okay to go ahead and completely bash someone, simply for having an opinion. You know, my dad taught me that you have two ears and one mouth, use what you have more of. And so, until we start listening to each other, pretty wise guy, I thought, until we start listening to each other, and literally listen, not when someone's talking, just wait to talk, that's not listening. Listening process and respecting each other's opinions, whatever that opinion is, I think until we can do that as a community, we're going to continue to have stuff like this, and I hope that we can rise above all of this that we're seeing out in the country. And again, we need all to take a step back when we're having these disagreements, because really, at the center of all this is just these kids. So I hope we do better.
Ken Reiman.
Ken Reiman, six-twenty-three North Winter Garden in Bowling Green. At the last board meeting, I read the Fanning Howie letter, which confirmed the majority of the Southeast Task Force recommended the one-community school as the best solution. We now see there is incorrect information being spread about the financial task force findings, and I'd like to address this publicly by reviewing the Financial Task Force voting, a sheet that was put out by David Conley and tabulated by that group. It's a series of questions, and I'll go through them quickly. Based on an estimated forty million cost of the project, would you recommend proceeding with valid issue? Yes, twenty-nine; no, six. What type of bond issue would you recommend? A property tax only, three votes; a traditional income tax only, five votes; earned income tax only, zero votes; combined property tax and traditional income tax financing, twenty-three votes. How would you split the cost of the project? Fifty-fifty split, seventeen votes; other, five votes. What term would you recommend financing? Thirty-seven years, nine votes; thirty years, twenty-one votes. Would you recommend the district apply for the state partnership program? Yes, thirty votes; no, one vote. Would you recommend the valid issue be a single, two separate issues, three votes, or one combination? Twenty-six votes. When would you recommend placing the question on the ballot? November twenty-nineteen, nineteen votes; March twenty-twenty, seven votes; November twenty-twenty, four votes. Summarize. The task force recommends a single combined valid issue to be placed on the November twenty-nineteen ballot to reflect the not-to-exceed project course of forty million, to be paid by two taxes. The first is the loaded property tax for twenty million for an estimated one point seven six mils over thirty years, which has been reduced by the audit adjustment. The second is the traditional income tax for an estimated forty percent over thirty years, which will finance an additional twenty million, plus provide approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for the ongoing major capital repairs. The Fanning Howie letter and the Financial Task Force voting results confirm the board followed the recommendations of both task forces. The issue on the ballot is exactly what the task force recommended is the best solution. This community needs to move forward and get our kids out of substandard buildings and trailers and provide sufficient space for all activity, our school activities. I want to thank the board for providing the community the best way to do that, which will improve educational opportunities, eliminate unbalanced class sizes, improve safety and security, and provide adequate facilities in a financially responsible manner now and into the foreseeable future. Again, I want to thank the board for pretty worthy opportunity to this community to say yes to the best solution. Thank you. I'll put copies of that tally sheet on the back, so anybody can see it.
Great, thank you. James Conway.
All right, James Conway, one-four-five-zero-five Liberty High Road, Bowling Green, Ohio. All right, well, I haven't been this nervous since I asked my father-in-law to, kind of bear with me. So, my name is James Conway, and I'm a preschool special education teacher for Bowling Green City Schools. I spent two years at Crim, and now I'm in my second year at Cana in the Modul. My wife Stephanie is agriculture education instructor and FFA advisor for the high school, and my daughter, oldest daughter, is a third grader at Kenwood. I believe I offer a unique perspective of being in all three elementary buildings, either as a teacher or as a parent. As well, I want to touch on a very important reason why I'm supporting one-community school, and it starts with building relationships. We, as a community, have the unique opportunity to build a school where all Bobcats can attend from day one in kindergarten and not be separated by where they live. We can build that relationship by families, and we can build that relationship with teachers, and we can build that relationship, most importantly, with students, students to students. That student-to-student relationship can be created with a team atmosphere from the beginning. Friendships and bonds can be formed as well as creating a strong unity and pride in their school. We, as teachers, are there to strengthen these relationships with students and help them with their educational journey to gain confidence in their ability to achieve their goals. I don't want to have our students wait until sixth grade to build that relationship with all Bobcats. It needs to start day one in kindergarten. That way, we can be united as one-community school. Another benefit of one-community school is more equitable classroom sizes for students and to provide services, more early intervention for students who may need it, as a whole Bobcat educational team will finally be together. The earlier we can intervene and provide students with services, the more successful they will be in their educational, career, and in life. We can make the most positive impact not only for our community, our families, our teachers, and most importantly, our students, by coming together, more importantly, putting aside those differences, and voting yes for a one-community school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri Sparks.
Sherri Sparks, one-zero-zero-eight-five Milton Road, Milton Center. Hello, thank you for your time. My children attend Bowling Green City Schools. I want to take a moment to share my perspective as a parent who has mostly shied away from the political lines drawn and spanned. I grew up in a farm town and graduated with less than a hundred young adults. Our families knew one another for generations. I loved being part of a small town where you felt like you ran for celebrity when you saw your teacher at the store, and then you and your parents called her Mrs. Cosbray because she taught both of you. We have now become part of the Bowling Green school community. It feels like a family away from home, which honestly, in some ways, it should. Children say goodbye to their parents and love to their teachers for five days a week and six-plus hours a day. I'm filled with gratitude from a heart and smile that greet my kids right where they are every day. I have watched them for the last five years care for every child in their school, the child who loves to help, the child who struggles to read, the star athlete, the office frequent flyer, the PTO kids, the child who hasn't eaten since school on yesterday. I could go on, but my point is that they don't choose which child to send them. They just take them by the hand and try to help them, to try to quiet their storms, hear their stories, kindle their dreams, preserve their right to still be a child in their standing age. And then they assess their educational needs, write to IEPs, prep for standardized testing, and reach pay programs, and fight for necessities like gym, art, music, library, and even recess. And don't forget the school nurse and the guidance counselors, who both treat the pain that children encounter, but in different ways. When living in a school, of all the things I see the staff doing, complaining is never one. Instead, they walk in every day and make the best of what they have in order to care for, educate our community's children. I used to work at my hometown post office. I remember how it really stuck with me one day when I watched a mail carrier pause at the door and then walk out into a torrential rain. I thought some jobs, some needs are just greater than our conveniences and simply must be done. And then it resurfaced watching the kindred staff and students walk into their outdated and dilapidated schools. Our community schools are so desperately needing to be made a priority, to give them such comparable educational resources that our neighboring communities, not to be placed at the center of a political target where conversations demean their value and dissolve their futures, but instead sees them as a worthy community investment, an investment that for some comes at a fraction of the cost of their daily coffee or latest gadgets, and for others is a bit more of a sacrifice. But in the end says, yes, we as a community will invest our children in our future communities. Please consider a yes vote on the upcoming school levy. Our school, staff, and children deserve the best resources that are available to them. Thank you.
Laura Kellman.
Hello, my name is Laura Keller. I came to speak to the Board of Education and the audience about the Bowling Green levy and its importance. Twenty-one years ago, Gary and I made a decision to make Bowling Green our home, because we felt that Bowling Green was a great place to live, with good schools, a university, ease of access to a large city, and a place for education for all children was a priority. We thought a lot, build a home, and became proud BG residents, and we've been happy with our choice. At that time, I was employed as principal of Springfield High School, in fact, sitting in our audience, one of my great math teachers, Mr. Jeff Dever, I always take the term Jeff Dever. And I also hired Janet Taylor from Bowling Green, so good folks, yeah, folks. And Gary was employed at Kenwood Elementary as the principal. Over the years, we've been involved in helping schools grow and change and meet the demands of the future. With nearly one hundred years of combined experience to schools and education, I hate to admit that, we share many beliefs about what works in schools and what must be done to address the concerns as they are identified. One important consideration that we encountered was the constant struggle to maintain class sizes at manageable levels and to balance them from teacher to teacher and building to building. Often changing attendance boundaries is used as a means of achieving this balance, but results in frustrated families and their children are thrust into new situations on a nearly annual basis. In a school district the size of Bowling Green, the best possible solution is to combine the elementary schools into one common school. We believe that the board and the study committees have done an excellent job of analyzing the current situation and making a responsible recommendation to the current plan. We have visited many classrooms and evaluated many teachers during our careers as a teacher, counselor, principal, and superintendent. While doing so, we've learned that teachers love to collaborate with other teachers and specialists resolve problems that students encounter while learning in their classrooms. It seems obvious that a team of eight to ten teachers combined with a counselor, psychologist, special needs teachers, and other specials could be more effective in finding strategies to help struggling students. No one person can see the whole child, but a larger team offers more perspectives on that child and a greater likelihood of success. As an example, some students today may live in homes where there are few, if any, printed materials, but a large TV and many other electronic devices. As a result, a team of teachers may be called upon to devise strategies to compensate in the teaching of reading. Although educational effectiveness is and should be the greatest of all considerations when choosing any school organizational plan, there are other important aspects to consider as well, such as, one, operational costs. Just a few examples are maintenance of one property instead of three, operation of one food service facility instead of three, and half the efficiency of transportation services.
Laura, maybe twenty-five seconds, please.
I am all set.
Okay, thank you.
Improved safety and security measures required in today's environment, ease of access by personnel, and reduction of time lost to travel from building. And members of a growing segment of our population referred to as senior citizens who strongly favor the methods chosen to finance the construction and maintenance of this proposed facility as opposed to refurbishing old buildings, whose size and design limit the needed flexibility. It is for this reason and many others that we strongly support the one-community, one-school program. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mary Hinkleman.
Mary Hinkleman, Executive Director of the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce at one-thirty South Main Street and residing at two Augusta Drive in Bowling Green. The Board of Directors of the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce voted to endorse the upcoming Bowling Green City Schools Bond Levy at their September meeting. The mission statement of the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce is to support an environment for the development and success of business within the Bowling Green area. This mission statement guides us in our actions and provides the framework for our organization's strategies. Having schools that provide a quality education, are competitive in the use of technology and facilities, and will produce a future quality workforce to meet the objectives of this mission statement and will contribute to the economic growth and development of life in Bowling Green. Passage of this levy would not only put the schools on the same level with neighboring school districts as far as vastly improving technology, instruction, and classrooms, it would drive corporate decision-makers to look at Bowling Green as a community where they would want to locate their corporations. Thank you.
My name is Leigh McClair. I live at two-twenty-seven East Napoleon Road in Bowling Green, Ohio. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, and I have a letter to read. The League of Women Voters of Bowling Green enforces the Bowling Green City Schools ballot issue, which will be voted on Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. This is a one-point-six-mil property tax and a point-two-five-percent traditional income tax. We urge you to vote yes. Excellent schools are vital to the economic stability and growth of our school district. We were taught in schools paid for by earlier generations, schools that ably served the needs of the time, but now, in the twenty-first century... But now, in the 21st century, our children face new realities, including enormous changes in technology. Also, individuals with many levels of talent, differing backgrounds, languages, and interests must be served in each classroom. Easier communication among teachers will allow for a speedier recognition of and action on students' mental and physical health problems. And in a consolidated school, the issue of school safety will be more easily assured. Bowling Green's school board listened to voters and lowered the amount of money being requested and the length of the commitment by A, dropping plans to update the high school, B, splitting the request between a bond issue and an income tax, and C, applying for state funding which is expected to be 17% for the year's grant. Current low interest rates offer hope for reducing projected debt costs. The proposed pay-five multi-winged school will be built on the northern edge of the Pearl Road School Campus on land owned by the school district, separated from other buildings by a wide field. Once the levy passes, the city of Bowling Green will donate additional land to facilitate traffic flow and parking separate from the other school buildings. An architectural design will be drawn until the levy is passed. This type of consolidated school can be seen in other Ohio cities such as Defiance. The aerial view of the Defiance School looks like three small schools which are linked by a large cafeteria, a gym, and common space which can be used creatively. Community and staff input and design details will be important to meet our goals and meet our unique needs. We want to provide Bowling Green Elementary School students with an excellent educational facility for their growth and development. Please vote yes in Bobcat Proud. Signed by Leigh Hotcliff, President and President, Chair, Education Committee, League of Women Voters of Bowling Green.
Thank you. Richard Chamberlain?
Richard Chamberlain, 1755 Old Beale Road, Bowling Green, Ohio. My comment here is the Board is second in all ways in funding this project. The latest funded proposal will produce the following for a $40 million project. For a percent income tax for 30 years, we'll collect $56.4 million. 1.6 mil property tax for 30 years will collect $21 million. Total tax collected for 30 years will be $77.4 million. By the way, that's from the article report. The extra $37.4 million won't pay a teacher, buy any supplies, or build any of the new buildings. Instead of this proposal, if the Board were to went for a 1% income tax and put that money in affirmative proof of funds that it needs to build this project, we could have collected the $40 million requested in 5.34 years. Around six years, we'd use an earned income tax, lessening the burden on our empty populations, pay tax for the building, and then three years already into this project. Now, using the formula for the Sentinel, the current proposed plan, the average homeowner with an average income will pay $13,337 over 30 years. With a 1% income tax plan, the same homeowner, the helm owner, will pay $7,036 over 5.3 years, saving that same family $6,300. Some folks will say that's unaffordable to pay for this project in this manner. But the difference between these two plans is $2.50 a day for those five, four, 5.34 years. And we won't stress our next generation with this debt. Now, as far as honesty and transparency goes, we folks have a record that is well documented. The following just caught with them. When I proposed an income tax rate for this project in March 2018, this I responded, 321-18, Joe Carr, can't use an income tax on your computer. 4318, Sentinel, Francis, you can't use an income tax for this project. 412-18, Francis and I received an email. Both of us, from C Broker, OFCC, saying we can use an income tax and there's availability of State funds. The board meeting that date suddenly moved back and David Conley was hired in a very different manner. And for the declaration that the laundry buildings are overcrowded was addressed in the knowledge by Paul Walker and Francis last month. Paul, he's been thanking for pointing that out. Thank you for your time.
Linda Lander?
Linda Lander, 1067 Carroll Road, here. It's disappointing to hear Superintendent Scrooge's comments about the incidents that occurred. I was a member of the Task Force, Facilities Task Force, and we also had an incident. I don't know if he wasn't listed in your report. Police report, I heard about it, I went to the police department, got the free police report. I have a copy of media, a copy of the article, send it to you in media. There was a perceived that the verbal statement was, and I quote, "Bad things happen to good people, just remember that." It was investigated by the police department. Person agreed that they made their statement, that said they really did, they didn't fully meet the requirement. That candidate, that person named in that report is also a candidate for school. So this has been going on for a very long time. We should make our decisions about the facts, not about any other incidents. That's what I want to talk about today, are the facts and the documentation from the OFCC assessments that were done, from the Bowling Green Police Division assessment that indicated that the single school was the only safe and secure option of the facilities. We want to talk about our Facilities Task Force and our review of the OFCC data, the architects' assessment, and our guided tours by educational professionals. You hear now all the other reports of the educational professionals. We clearly outline the advantages of the single school. All those expert sources, OFCC, professional educators, architects, and police, provided substantial information in support of the single elementary school. There's some points I want to make about those assessments. Number one, as other people pointed out, Kenwood and Conia are obsolete, and a new building is the only physically responsible choice according to the OFCC. These schools are 65 years old, and their functionality and condition are too poor for educational purposes. They no longer meet state standards in that area. OFCC renovate replace ratio is 66%. Kenwood is at 79%, Conia is at 78%, Far Above is 66%. To quote an OFCC assessment, quote, "Upgrading all mechanical HVAC equipment." The work to do this would seem to be post prohibitive. We cannot piecemeal this, they cannot be renovated, there needs to be a different solution. The OFCC ratings of Kenwood and Conia and even the high school have ratings of borderline for almost all major categories of the OFCC assessment. Some schools have ratings of poor in the categories.
30 seconds on the question.
So finally, I want to make a point about what we saw, and that's for no school. The children of sensory needs in one school were on the late stage for overcrowded items. Those children are right. Adaptable physical education was in the hallway, and schools were not built for adaptable physical education. They weren't built for special needs. Unhughed school, the school needs to be built to accommodate all children in this community, regardless of their levels.
Wayne Colvin?
Wayne Colvin, 845 Country Club Drive. Some people that know me know I'm an analyst, I analyze everything. I analyze whether or not there's enough syrup on the paint paper. And I like to think of myself as cruel. Other people might think of me. I was on both task force. I went in thinking, well, three neighborhoods schools, sounds like a good idea. I analyze. I looked, I listened, I read. I read every page of the facilities, the Ohio Facilities Report. I've got the notebook back there with me, if anybody would like to have responsive readings. And I came to the conclusion, I heard a lot of people talking about neighborhood schools, so I said, well, let's get the facts. And, you know, there's a lot of different definitions. One is the number of kids that live within a mile of that school. So they can walk to school. Last year, I got the stats. Last year, only 39 kids lived within a mile of Kenwood. Only 101 lived within a mile of Crim. Only 105 lived within a mile of Conia. 245 kids. I also asked for an estimate of how many kids would live within a mile of a community school. The estimate was, you know, it was, well, approximately, we wouldn't know for sure, probably about 200 kids. Sounds like a neighborhood school to me. But I don't, I don't think numbers make the neighborhood school. I've never thought that. I always thought that a neighborhood school was created by the teachers, by the children, and the parents working together to create a welcoming atmosphere in the educational environment. Yeah, I'll say it. Old Fire once told me you can paint a pig, but it's still a pig. And basically, that's what we'd be doing, we'd be throwing any money at those old schools. The architect also said in one of his documents that if we built two new schools, we'd have about 20,000 square feet more than if we built a community school. Because you're going to have to have two cafeterias and two kitchens and two boiler rooms and whatever. Based on this year's estimates for building, that would be 5.4 million additional dollars. I guess I'll skip the, you know, we borrow always private in this city, in this community. Not in my town. Not in my town. The word is lost. Because we have allowed something to creep in by certain individuals, not in my town. But I'm going to say that residents of this community in the 50s put the children of the community first. To fund new schools that at that time were state of the art. Many people in this room benefited from those people in 1950s to pay higher taxes, to make a sacrifice. So the future leaders of our community would have an excellent educational experience. It's time for this community to step up and quit the bickering and support the kids in this community, the children, because they are our future leaders. Thank you.
Tracy Higgins?
Tracy Higgins, 318 South Enterprise Street. I stand before you tonight in this Ridge sweatshirt. It was a privilege to teach there for 13 years. But just as that school no longer exists, the educational landscape under which it proudly served this community also no longer exists. Demands on our schools have changed, as have our community and the students we serve. The notion of neighborhood schools is a nostalgic illusion here and has been for some time. On Ridge's final day, the Sentinel photographed dismissal. Photos were not of students walking home. In my class of 23 second graders, I could count the walkers on one hand. The final photograph was students waving from school buses, buses that traveled throughout Bowling Green. I've now been at Crim for seven years, and I still count on one hand the number of walkers in my class. Most ride buses or daycare vans that also travel throughout Bowling Green. This reliance on transportation is indicative of a big picture cultural change in our community. Locally, BG has the more transient population. I look at my daughters' classes and see how few were actually together K to 5 in this community anymore. Transientity even within our district leads to interrupted progress and lost opportunities as we do not have equity in services, resources, space, or staffing. Today's families can be faced with the choice of splitting up their children between buildings to access services. Some talk of realigning enrollment every year, and that would result in moving children from one building to another, year after year after year, to equalize class sizes and perhaps split families again with students in multiple grades. Those certainly wouldn't be in our school, we don't have them now. Providing equitable educational opportunities and resources through equalized class sizes, spaces, teaching, and learning conditions becomes possible with One Community, One School. Address should not determine access to opportunity. As an alumni, I know we've been divided far too long. My very first letter to the editor was written as a student in the 1980s in this town, lamenting that BG was changing the kitchen at South Main and Ridge to satellite facilities. I wrote then of the division between East Side and West Side, City and Willow. It is long past time to end that. We have another opportunity to bring everyone together in one school where I believe in my colleagues and the potential of a school within a school that is already proven in our successful middle school teams. We need a school that builds bridges instead of families. Times have changed. I loved Ridge. Its time has passed. We serve a new generation of students that deserve opportunities that are not limited by their address. It's time for One Community and One School.
Excuse me, Tracy Hobes?
Tracy Hobes, 988 Reeves Court. I stand before you Bobcat Proud. I stand before you Bobcat Proud because of this board and because you've done what's best for kids. I stand in front of you Bobcat Proud of the One Community, One School Committee because of making decisions and helping to do what's best for kids. And Bobcat Proud because of the educators and administrators in this community because they show up every single day for our students. And our students show up for them because they want what's best. I'm in support of One Community, One School because of all of these people that have spoken tonight and because of the differing of opinions is okay, but how we do it. So in the words of Michelle Obama, when they go low, we go high. And I know that this board has done that. Thank you.
Brenda Pike?
Brenda Pike, 543 Hockman Square, Bowling Green.
Brenda Pike, 543 Acne Street, Bowling Green. I am not speaking today to give a review of all that this community has been through these past several months. I'm not here to dispute fact from fiction, nor debate from one side or another. As I consider and reflect upon it all, I do wonder what God thinks of this. It certainly saddens him to see this community divided, neighbor against neighbor. One of the greatest commandments he gave us was to love your neighbor as yourself. Your neighbor is not just the person who lives next door, but everyone you come in contact with. If you are for a consolidated school, and your neighbor is for keeping neighborhood schools, should we not respect one another? This should be the case, but has not been my experience, as I have been verbally attacked. Perhaps this has happened to you as well. My response to that, forgives. Both sides claim that they want what's best for our kids. Given that, shouldn't we care about what kind of example we are setting? Sadly, for many months, we have shown our children that adults can behave less than respectively to one another. This has created an atmosphere of anger and division. What message do we want to send them? We say they all belong and matter, that bullying is unacceptable, yet this is exactly the type of behavior some of us are experiencing. Shouldn't we demonstrate respect and work together to attain what is best for future generations? God is all known and all seen. His plans are perfect. As we near Election Day, I ask you to join me in this very simple prayer. Lord, your will be done, not my own. And everyone say, amen.
Okay. Okay, it's time to follow the journey, unless any of the other boardroom said anything we'd like to discuss or say. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second. Mrs. Shure, please call the room.
William Clifford.
Yes.
Jill Carr.
Yes.
Norman Gere.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Jimmy Stewart.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Nice job.
I'm so sorry.
What?
I got blood shows.
How are you?
Nice job tonight.